Good evening, I would like to call the October 7th, 2024 New Albany Plain Local Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Lofton, please call the roll. President Kalanowski, here. Vice President Newman, absent. Ms. Fuller is absent. Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on our nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent Sawyers, are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda?
But then Kalanowski, members of the board, there are two corrections on the agenda this evening. The first is under Personnel Section Number Six A, Item Number One. Anne Stanko should be corrected from MA plus thirty to MA, or MA going from MA twenty to MA thirty instead of MA forty. So it's a typographical mistake. The correct answer is MA plus thirty. And then Personnel Item Number Fifteen came in for the Evening Event Manager for not NAPL sponsored events is the OHSAA rate, which is now forty dollars, not thirty-five.
Thank you Superintendent Sawyers. In addition, I would like to motion, I'm making a motion to table the naming rights policy discussion. As Jen Fuller was going to walk us through that tonight and she has obtained. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson. Ms. Lofton, please call the roll. President Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next is an opportunity for public participation and with none, we will move on to communications to the board, beginning with Superintendent's items. Superintendent Sawyers?
President Kalanowski, members of Board of Education, I'd like to begin this with the Campus Master Plan update. Whereas the Board of Education is fully aware, we've been conducting town hall meetings every Thursday evening since September twelve at the Intermediate School. In addition to that, we've actually been on the road. So we've been in the Lynx, we've been in Fenway, we're invited to pull to this Thursday. We have a date in the preserve on that's pending confirmation through Ms. Fuller. So we're actually going out and talking in neighborhoods as well. So based upon the town hall meetings and based upon the neighborhood conversations today, I want to try to summarize some of the questions we're receiving and provide information tonight relative to the facts and information associated to issue forty to try to help our community at large understand part of the information we're receiving back in question format to try to hit the highlights of what people are asking most frequently. In addition to all the information that's posted as facts and information on the New Albany Plain Little School website. So I'm going to start tonight with our why. And this really is the core of a conversation that's taking place in the neighborhood. So not so much on the Thursday night conversations, but in the neighborhood conversations we've had to date, parents and community members alike have brought up in conversation that really issue forty represents an opportunity to remember the why of what we do called education in our community and it's focused on students. And there's over five thousand or nearly five thousand one hundred students in our school district today that represent reasons why issue forty is important to the school district. Another question that has come up and it really ties back to when we're talking about the roll off of the community authorities. So I went back in the archives at the central office to try to find things from really nineteen ninety-four. And this is the development of our past in the school district when we became trends or eventually transitioned from plain local schools to the New Albany Plain Local School District. And it really was the visionary impact of what was taking place back into nineteen ninety-three and then construction formally beginning in nineteen ninety-four that looked out, looked at our current high school campus because that was the first portion of this campus that was fully developed. And these are some shots from aerial topography that were taken during the construction process. Really that started back in the top left from nineteen ninety-four and then at the bottom right hand side finished. And that picture actually was from July of nineteen ninety-six. Based upon the archives that I saw. So it's actually very interesting to look at the the topology that existed and what specifically happened to start this thing called a school campus, even down to, and it's hard to see on the screen, but you can see it in the pictures that you have in your slide deck, the little police car that's in the bottom on Dublin-Garrenville Road today, that's in the bottom picture on the left. So there's a little tiny police car right there on the street that's kind of passing the construction site. So that takes us to our present day. So over the time since nineteen ninety-four, we've built the campuses that exist today to illustrate five main academic buildings on our school campus from the early learning center, the primary school, the intermediate school, which was the last building built on campus, the middle school, and then obviously the iconic rotunda that was in the previous picture at the high school that sits adjacent to the quad. So these are the facilities as they exist today on our school campus to serve our why of today fifty-one hundred students district wide. As we look towards the future, we went through a very robust process associated to developing the Campus Master Plan. So from really the result of over two years worth of work, all the way back to looking at capacity studies, enrollment studies, future enrollment growth, everything that was happening within the school district. All of that work got translated into a Campus Master Plan that was updated for the first time since two thousand and ten. So this is the updated master plan that we released in the summer that ties back to your board actions and resolutions to place issue forty on the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four ballot. How do we get there besides that reality of the work? It really goes back to community and I'm going to focus in on the community aspects of what happened specifically to build the city of New Albany and really the partnerships that took place through the years with the New Albany Company. So to date, over two hundred acres of land has been donated to New Albany Plain Local School District to create this campus. So in addition to the hundred and twenty acre campus, there's the eighty acre wetland that currently exists adjacent to property that's used for educational purposes. And even in tonight, as I continue the presentation, you're going to see the New Albany Company remains a strong partner to the school district because once again, they're coming forward to donate land that they own within our community for the benefit of our school district. Also within that partnership clearly is the strong partnership and alliance with the city of New Albany and having them be a thoughtful partner in the process of how this community has grown and specifically how both entities, both the city and the New Albany Company have protected the school district over time and looking at how fast things happen specifically to benefit the school district based upon the next version of whatever New Albany Plain Local Schools could cost. So why now? Several people have asked us again to go through the cooperative strategy study at our neighborhood meetings or at the Thursday night community forums that we're hosting at the Intermediate School to try to help people understand what specific is happening with capacity, why we need it today based upon what's currently working and not working for today's students in our school district, but at the same time account for future enrollment growth. And then what is that growth projection? So I went back and I pulled and we shared this previously at Board of Education meetings, it's posted on our website. It was the Cooperative Strategies Report that we've done earlier at Board of Education meetings over six months ago that kind of illustrated the nine months of work that took place with the city of New Albany and the New Albany Company, working with partners with the school district to look at our current capacity study. So we're between ninety to ninety-eight percent fully occupied at the elementary level. We have rooms still at the middle school as it exists today and we're at eighty percent at the high school today for capacity purposes. In the education world, when you look at building utilization or ideal utilization to meet the academic development needs of kids for all the related services that take place beyond just academics, a school building should be between seventy-five and eighty percent, seventy-five and eighty-five percent occupied to have room for all the other cohorts and resources and interventions, support services that are provided to meet the needs of all students. At the bottom, the chart illustrates our work with the New Albany Company and the city of New Albany. We've been asked about this in our neighborhood meetings as well as Thursday nights about what is the projected enrollment growth? How did you come up with this number? And where are those neighborhoods that are anticipated to be developed? So we've actually gone through a process with the city and with NACO to identify that. And it illustrates the approximate growth of one thousand and forty-three. We're using round numbers of a thousand students over the course of the next ten years to take the school district enrollment to six thousand one hundred and seventy. When you're using that number, as we published in the Campus Master Plan and we published in the Cooperative Strategies Report, it shows you one of the reasons why the two thousand and twenty-four Campus Master Plan includes a new elementary school building because we're currently at ninety to ninety-eight percent fully occupied within our elementary schools. And with the increased projection of enrollment growth, we need another building at the elementary level to safely accommodate all students. When we do that and you actually look ten years out, you will see we are between eighty and eighty-four percent, on average eighty-three percent occupied within our school buildings, which is within the range of what ideal utilization looks like in a public school district to provide all the related services necessary to meet the needs of our students. So our one hundred and thirty-five million dollar issue forty on the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four ballot includes two phases. And phase one between two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-eight includes the new elementary school for all the kindergarten, first grade and second grade, renovations of the existing age building at the high school to turn it into a high school technology hub, renovating the original middle school stadium, which is over thirty years old, larger relocated transportation facility to remove us from Johnstown Road and centrally locate to the school campus and then expanding the bus lane at the early learning center to accommodate future bus capacity at the E L C services. So one of the things we've been asked about in these meetings is, well, what does this look like? Do you have any idea what these things are going to look like? So people want to know a picture's worth of thousand words. So some of the literature that's being published shows the preliminary concept for the elementary school. And again, this is not our traditional Georgian looking building with brick and white columns. This was a different solution that was proposed as a measure of cost savings. This design is in the neighborhood of one point two to one point five million dollars less than the exterior facade of the traditional Georgian columns and brick. This is not a final design. It's conceptual for pricing purposes to help us understand probable costs. So we put this out there to see what the community reaction would be to it if based upon where this building is proposed to go, Office Swicker Woods Boulevard where current JV and varsity baseball fields are. But across the street from Plain Township Pool and next to Wexford Pavilion and Park, aesthetically, it kind of fits with the design that would be on that corner. So that's conceptually a rendering. It's not final. I don't have an exterior rendering of the tech hub because it's an existing building. So we're actually talking about the original Columbus Metropolitan Library building. It was built on the school campus that was then given to the school district as part of our construction process. When we built it, so that after the library moved out, it became used by the school district. So we are proposing changing the interior of that building to house all things technology from robotics to interactive media, potentially network systems, cybersecurity, three D design, programming software, e-game sports, et cetera, et cetera, with a presentation or general access lab space that is acoustically sound unlike today. So there is no new building for tech hub. We're renovating the existing inside of a current building on our school campus. The middle school stadium, this is just a rendering from the architects to kind of give the image. So Cardulus Way is behind that home side of the bleachers. And basically that's the green space adjacent to it that's owned by the city on the backside. But that little van traveling on the left hand side is on Cardulus Way. So that you can see the car line, but that's what we're proposing is actually renovating our existing middle school stadium with a new athletic turf playable for all intersclassical sports, grades seven through twelve that require outdoor field play, a new six lane track, new shot put, new discus, new scoreboard, expanding home bleachers, expanding the visitor bleachers, lighting at the middle school stadium, as well as a new press box concessions and indoor restrooms. So all that's part of renovating the middle school stadium. So although the image at the bottom on the transportation facility has changed and I just don't have a current drawing that I can copy that's not big as a table. So I don't have a way to get that picture yet. So I'm showing a previous rendering of what will become the larger transportation facility. One of the things that we are working through is the cost savings potential between the school district and Plain Township, specifically working with the trustees for the Plain Township Fire Department. We've talked to NACO, NACO is giving us thirteen acres of land on State Route six oh five and New Albany Road East for the intended use of a mixed use building that would be shared by the school district for transportation services and the Plain Township Fire Department as a potential site for the North Substation. As the community grows, that's part of the aspiration of Plain Township and the Fire Department. So we've been working with the architects on a potential layout for what that would look like to have one large building that's basically separated by our firewall. So the fire department would be on one side and the transportation department would be on the other. Again, this is an early rendering. It has changed. I just don't have an image of the current version. It's actually been flipped based upon the layout and the site engineering that's underway to understand what's possible specifically on that site based on the egress requirements that the fire department would need. But it does save money both for the township, for the fire department, and it would save money for the school district during construction. The last piece of phase one is the E L C bus lane and the Swicker Woods Boulevard improvements. So we are actively working with the city to look at Swicker Woods Boulevard, both the intersection and the roadway going into Swicker Woods Boulevard. The A on here represents what would change in the bus lane specifically as part of our phase one. But then there would be roadway conditions that would change. So that little blue box that you see outlined or dashed, Patrick, got a warning, ten minute. That we're not signed in as Becky, are we? No, that's wise. We need to be on Becky's account. That blue dot is Safety Town. So Safety Town's not going anywhere. Miracle Field across the street is not going anywhere. That hundred and thirty-two thousand number that's cut off is the new school building and its proposed location. And then there's a egress road that comes in behind Safety Town in this drawing. Again, all conceptual. None of this has been laid out by engineers. We're still working on all the site work that has to happen related to soil borings to confirm what specifically can happen in that area. In phase two, we're talking about the construction of the updated high school science labs, building a fine arts hub that would benefit students in grades five through twelve for art choir, band orchestra and theater. And then obviously expanding middle school, high school cafeteria space with a multipurpose common area that would allow us to have the ability to have future enrollment growth at the high school to reach our two thousand student capacity that's projected. There'll be four hundred additional students that would have to have meal service available to them in large groups. So we need additional space to actually house that. This is an existing building at the high school. So on the far, far left of the drawing, you can see the theater all the way through the art studio. That's the existing I building that sits on Fodor Road adjacent to the parking lot next to Eagle Stadium. We are proposing a ten thousand square foot addition to that building and complete renovation on the inside to turn it into state of the art science labs. So the model that has been used is after the Ohio State University Science Labs. There's a high school in Ohio that has just recently built these. We are scheduling a site visitation to go see them in action with classroom teachers to understand that in preparation for what will become schematic design in the future within the school district. This is strictly conceptual, but it was used for probable cost pricing for the actual estimates that were produced. The Fine Arts Hub, again, this is a preliminary concept that illustrates the Fine Arts Hub. This would be built in front of the middle school gymnasium building where the middle school, high school cafeteria building is today. So it's a mixed use building of the middle school gym and the cafeterias. We're proposing a fifty, approximately fifty-eight thousand square foot building that would come in front of that building and adjacent to it. And then you can see the blow up on the right hand side for those of us that have bifocals that can't read that little print. It actually shows you that the visual arts and the theatrical portion of the fine arts program would be in the front, joining with the student comments area. And then on the left hand side of today's existing building, as you see the green space of the ramp that's adjacent to Jefferson, that's where the instrumental and vocal music department would be built to house what will become a fine arts hub within our school district. Several people have asked again for pictures. So these are recently hot off the press. So these are preliminary conceptual drawings of what this would look like. In this case, because it's coming to main campus to join existing facilities, it has to have the Georgian-Jeffersonian look with the columns. So that is what you're seeing illustrated here. It actually would connect for visual purposes to the center of the middle school entrance and building K currently at the high school. So it actually would join those buildings together for the first time and students could traverse back and forth between the middle school and high school across the arts building or through the arts building on the pergolas that are basically illustrated here. Again, conceptual design. We'll go through lots of schematic design once we get through the outcome of issue forty on the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four ballot. All of this would be possible again back to our community, connects us with our partners. So specifically for issue forty, we do have partners both at the city of New Albany and the New Albany Company. And we're very grateful. So for the New Albany Company and specifically their partnership, because we are proposing to build the current baseball, the new building on the current baseball softball field, we need to relocate them. The current discussion is approximately fifteen acres within Ganton Park, which is behind today's fire station as the new location of both JV and varsity softball and a new JV baseball field to join the varsity baseball field that exists today. So we actually for the first time would have the ability to have JV and varsity baseball in the park, join JV and varsity softball, and we wouldn't just be subject to Babelheimer Park or away for our JV team. The city of New Albany has been very good and working with to their professional staff to convene regular meetings. Our meetings now include literally over twenty people from the city team, NACO, EMHNT, MKSK and our architects and school district representatives to go through the continued discussions of the site plan, the civil work, the soil borings and everything else that's happening to understand what's possible specifically within that location. The Klangers Group has gone through the civil engineering assessment to look specifically at the site acres that's been needed. If we want to do all four fields in the park, it's a park-like setting and what specifically that would look like. The site conditions, most recently the wrinkle has been a discussion related to wetland restrictions because there are wetlands on that property. So we are now going through the process to understand what are the EPA requirements? Does it have to be mitigated? Does it not have to be mitigated? What can be saved? What does all of that look like? Based upon those discussions, we meet again on October twenty-third. Everybody left the last meeting with homework assignments. It takes about two weeks to do those homework assignments and they bring the answers back the next meeting. So it's been great from a partnership perspective that people are coming to the table to try to find solutions to the problem. I know this is not a great picture because it's somewhat shaded, but this is a conceptual design that if you look at Ganton Park on the north side of what's being expanded into Ganton Park or Ganton Park Way, this will be a four field sitting adjacent to that with illustrations of parking. I'm showing this because I need you to understand our current reality. Those fun shapes that have the slash marks horizontally through them are the wetland. So you can clearly see that the wetlands have an impact on the proposed location and site. So now we're having into conversation to understand what's possible on this site based upon the wetland requirements that may or may not have to be met. And I don't have that answer tonight. That's been the most recent conversation. Once we got EMHNT and MKSK and other civil engineers involved that are familiar with this specific property, working specifically with the civil engineers from the school district. The new transportation facility is also a land donation thanks to the partnership with the New Albany Company. There's thirteen acres of land that's proposed at State Route six oh five and New Albany Road East. Again, this proposed site is mixed usage for the new school district transportation facility and Plain Township Fire Department North Substation. The soil borings are done. The initial site survey work has been completed. There's a report that I actually just received today. I haven't even opened the email. I saw the subject line. It says soil boring report and told me it was the transportation facility. The good news is I'm not a civil structural engineer and our architects will work with our civil and structural engineers to analyze the report. I did get a soundbite from the architect in a conversation over the weekend that he thought everything in the report was good news relative to future construction on that site. We are continuing our conversations with Plain Township, given the fact that it's a mixed use facility that's being proposed to go to that location. Since our last meeting, we met with the core design team. So that's what it's now called for the school, the architects, the engineers and the civil people that are coming together specifically working on baseball, softball and transportation now. We meet weekly. There's draft timelines for phase one and phase two that have now been created. So I have those. We will go through them again tomorrow at the core team meeting to see if anything is adjusted from our meeting with the city. We'll continue to review draft budget sheets for the Construction Council because we're working to finalize the RFP. Today was the deadline for submission of the RFQ. So we did receive RFQ submissions today. That's a request for qualifications. We will now go through the process to analyze them to determine finalists for the RFP. Request for proposal invitation that will likely go out no later than October fourteenth. We do have pre-proposal meetings scheduled in the RFP that we published previously to anyone submitting an RFQ that would occur next Wednesday, October sixteenth on campus. We're continuing our meetings with the city of New Albany regarding Swicker Woods, as I talked about, because of the impact of the new elementary school. And we're drafting contracts with Board Council in preparation for your November Board of Education meeting where we intend to finalize the agreements with the architect and the A and E contract specifically for architect and engineer services as well as the C M R, Construction Manager at Risk. So we're on target. So Board of Education members in our community at home that's watching through live stream, we apologize for the disruption or interruption in the meeting. We're having Zoom issues this evening to broadcast the meeting. So every forty minutes it appears we may have a disruption. So we're picking up from where I left off the presentation related to the Campus Master Plan. So. So Board of Education members and everyone watching at home. One of the questions we're being asked, obviously within the community forums or the neighborhood meetings is what will appear on the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four ballot? Since your last Board of Education meeting, Rebecca Jenkins, the treasurer, shared with you that the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four ballot will include language approved four point four six mils with an effective tax collection rate of one point four five mils. I actually went to the Franklin County Auditor Site. Their tax calculator is now up, which is different than our tax calculator, which is one of the questions we're receiving. So the Franklin County Auditor Site now shows the actual ballot language that we've specifically have shared in the past, but now there is an additional disclaimer in red. So the red portion is what was approved by the Franklin County Auditor Site. And our request is the school district to post when people look at the Franklin County Auditor Site and it specifically now includes additional explanation for New Albany Plain Local School District for the two thousand and twenty-four assessment collections in two thousand and twenty-five. The district will request the county to only collect one point four or five mils or fifty dollars and seventy-five cents per one hundred thousand dollars of the auditor's appraised value. The reasons for the lower amount are due to planning the issuance of the proposed new debt in two phases, use of available bond retirement fund balances and accounting for anticipated decreases in current outstanding debt payments. So that is what Treasurer Jenkins has been saying publicly for over a month. We've been giving the same answer in our community meetings. It is now on the Franklin County Auditor's website for people to see.
Michael, will they see any of that explanation on the ballot?
No, they will only see the ballot language specifically.
Okay.
They cannot see that on the ballot. So as Treasurer Jenkins has shared, it really just reinforces what I just read from the auditor site. It is a two-phase project including one point nine five mils of community design charge rolloff happening December thirty-first, two thousand and four. And then in addition to that, the financial land donations I talked about before make up our total possibility of issue forty. Becky, as the treasurer, has previously shared the estimated debt payments and bond retirement fund that are now captured on the Franklin County Auditor Site. So the Vegas gold color is our existing bond debt. And then the proposed maroon color is phase one. The proposed lighter pinkish salmon color is phase two that Becky's talked about. And then the black line at the top shows you the collection of the one point four or five mils specifically for issue forty collection. And you can see in a couple of the years, it's slightly below in the graph. So when you look at twenty thirty, the third bar from the right, you can see a gap between the bar and the dot. That's where bond retirement fund would be applied based upon money that's available at the Franklin County Auditor Site that was basically accounted for in years of better tax collection versus tax delinquency. So this is really the illustration of what shows off our nineteen ninety-seven, two thousand and two thousand and one bond debt that's expiring within our school district in two thousand and twenty. First one collection ends in two thousand and twenty-five, the second's two thousand and twenty-eight and two thousand and thirty. All three of those collections expirations were accounted for in the work that Becky did with Baker Tilly to go through and look at the estimated bond debt, how it's retiring, and how we can restructure the total bond debt to get to one point four or five mils overall. So issue forty, as illustrated on the Franklin County Auditor's site, Phase One is seventy-five million, Phase Two is sixty to make up one hundred and thirty-five million dollar project. Community Authority is expiring December thirty-first. We are asking for one point four or five mils, which equates to fifty dollars and seventy-five cents per one hundred thousand dollars of market assessed value. And then one of the other questions, and this has come up almost at every single meeting we've had in neighborhoods or even the Thursday night conversations, is the question in the community about the tax rate. Does everyone in the community pay the same tax rate for our school district? And the answer is yes. The amount changes based upon your assessed home value. So it's thirty-five percent of that that equates to your amount that's required for millage purposes, and then it's applied towards your assessed home value. But regardless if you have a New Albany plan or New Albany zip code is oh five four, you're in the Columbus portion of our school district, you're in the Westerville, the Gehanna, whatever slice of our pie that makes up your twenty-three geographic square miles, the tax rate for school is the same regardless of where you are in that twenty-three square miles. This is an example, and I left it in here just to show the preview of the calculators. This was Becky's work to show specifically how much it would cost when you go to the Franklin County Auditor's website, but you're currently paying the community authority. So if your assessed value is three hundred and fifty thousand two hundred, you divide by that by a hundred thousand dollars, it would be three point five times fifty dollars and seventy-five cents. It's a hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. This home is currently paying two hundred and twenty-one dollars for the community authority that will expire on December thirty-first. So beginning January first in collection for issue forty, they would see a net tax decrease of forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents annually for their support of issue forty. Becky created the calculator. The shortcut URL is www.naples.us/cost. It is not phone-friendly. I don't recommend you try to do this on your phone. It's actually better on a computer. So you actually can go through and actually calculate the exact cost for your home within our school district related to issue forty. Becky has previously shown in Board of Education meetings, but this is also something that's come out in conversation at our town halls or community meetings about our tax rate compared to other school districts. So we are currently at one point three zero. Hilliard, Grandview, and Southwestern are currently below us. Hilliard is currently on the ballot in November. Grandview's on the ballot. Bexley's on the ballot, and Westerville's on the ballot in November to join us. So those are the areas that currently exist. Becky forecasted if we pass, not assuming any other change for anyone else, we go to one point three five. Bexley actually has an income tax that's not part of that calculation that will clearly illustrate that as well. Issue forty Town Hall meetings will continue on Thursdays through October twenty-fourth or at their immediate school. We are also scheduling to go into neighborhoods. So if a neighborhood would like to host the Board of Education or the administration to specifically provide facts and information related to issue forty, you're welcome to contact Becky Jenkins as the Treasurer or me directly as the Superintendent. I want to summarize and really start where I began, based upon our conversations with community members at the meetings we've been to. Our core reason for issue forty, currently, there's five thousand one hundred of them sitting on our school campus, and we're projected to have six thousand one hundred and seventy of them in the next ten years. They're students, they're children, they're our community, they're our reason why we have school. I'm happy to answer any questions or receive comments you may.
That's a ton of information. I appreciate it, as always. As we were, the other thing that I've heard, and I'm sure people have seen on social media, is there has been some commentary about enrollment projections and growth, and whether or not the passage of issue forty would enable the district to all of a sudden take in a giant influx of students. You can have any opinion on that if you want. I mean, we're not in the business of helping developers decide what they're going to put in the community. But one of the things that I have done is just, I've gone back and I've looked at some of our previous projections. And I talk about this particularly because you mentioned, you mentioned NACO and the city a lot here, and about how they've been very helpful in managing the growth in our community, which has enabled us to plan the way we've been able to. We've talked about this a number of times, but those pictures that you put up from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-six, I, you know, it speaks to the vision and the long-term planning and the shared involvement, engagement of all the entities to be able to do this. But I was looking at our projections. You go all the way back to twenty thirteen. And in twenty thirteen, there was the potential, based on the enrollment projections at the time, that we'd have over sixty-one hundred students in the district right now.
Right.
So if people have concerns about, all of a sudden, the levy has passed and tons of growth happens and tons of kids come in, history shows that what this district and this community have done have been responsible in managing that growth, whether it was the projections from all the way back in twenty thirteen to even prior to the most recent one we did, which was the projections in twenty, I think it was twenty eighteen, when we had a Future Think Report. The Future Think Report projected enrollment for this school year, projected enrollment at a low of about just under fifty-one hundred students, which we are, to the potential of fifty-four, fifty-five hundred kids this year. So I only say that because I've been hearing it and, you know, not necessarily advocating one way or another for passage of the levy, but to make sure that people understand that there has been, you can go back and you can look historically at what's been done here in this district and the collaboration that's been, that we've had with our community partners to, again, thoughtfully develop the community. The enrollment projections show that. The other thing, too, that we've talked about a lot is way back in twenty thirteen and prior to that, you didn't have the Business Park either, which has been significant in helping keep the tax burden low. You know, I think people would be shocked because the knock on New Albany for the longest time has been, "You guys are way too expensive, way too, taxes are way too high." Well, you can look at our competitors, if you want to call it that, our, uh, do you call them competitors? Our peers, thank you.
Peers, neighboring districts.
Our neighboring districts. Fiscal responsibility. Thoughtful plan to grow. That has been what we've done here. It's been what we will continue to do here. But I, again, go back to looking at those pictures from thirty years ago and everything that was done to get us to where we are now.
That was a vision.
It was a vision, and it's not going to be drawn away tomorrow. And in fact, the whole reason we spent the last two years doing this was to start planning for the next thirty years. So I just want that to be out there because I hear the rumblings, and there's just no accuracy in it. So that's my note.
So thank you, John, for bringing that up. You know, we've worked hard with the city and New Albany Company to understand their planned growth for the next several years. And regardless of the passage of this levy, that planned growth is coming. So just trying to be very clear on that. We don't control growth. We have to serve our students, and currently, we have three buildings at capacity. And there is growth coming. It's been planned over the last several years, and New Albany Company and the city have shared those plans with us. And we need to prepare for the future, so. That's all I have to say.
Well, I'll jump in one more time. Sorry. But let's also be clear about what, as Michael pointed out, the reason we're doing this in the first place. It's not so we can have bigger buildings. We need to have the space and the technology and the tools and the classrooms that will provide our students with the opportunity to learn and grow and fulfill their potential and go and be the change they need to be in this world. That's why we are here. We're not here on a Monday night, a couple of times a month, to sit here and talk for, you know, so we can hear our own voices. This is for the kids. And while all of these numbers are important, and everyone should go and look and see how much it's going to, you know, cost or save that when it comes to the taxes. I mean, that's an important thing because we want to be fiscally responsible. But we have to remember, we're in the business of educating kids, and that's really what this is all about.
Two points, Michael. Capacity, when we talk about that, when a building is designed, prior to its opening, it's given a capacity number.
Correct.
So when we look at capacity, it's the capacity that the building was built for. Okay, great. So we have capacity issues currently, and frankly, they're only going to get worse if we don't do implement the master plan. Simple as that.
Next on the agenda, I'd like to welcome Dr. Mamiya to the podium. Dr. Mamiya is going to present the graduation requirement. So you will recall in our two-year superplan, we incorporated a goal to help people understand the changes that are happening in the state of Ohio specifically for the graduation requirement. So they've been phased in, but they will become fully effective. So I asked Dr. Mamiya to account for this as part of our work within the CIP because it's important for our families and our students to understand what's changing in the state of Ohio relative to graduation requirements and the honors diploma and everything else associated to it. So Dr. Mamiya, I'm going to turn it over to you as soon as I can just make a share. So if you'd like to.
You may, Dr. President Kellamowski.
I'll make that work. I'm here to talk, as Sarah said, about graduation requirements. So the current graduation requirements went into effect for the class of twenty twenty-four and full effect for twenty twenty-four. And they're considered what are called the permanent requirements. I think it's a funny name because at some point, Ohio Department of Education or ODU will actually change them again, but for now, they call them permanent requirements. There are three buckets in the current requirements that students have to earn. They have to earn a certain number of credits. They have to earn a competency, and they have to show readiness. The whole idea, and switching straight away from straight test scores and credits, was that they wanted to provide flexibility for students in order to reach their graduation. So the first bucket is course completion. These are the subjects that students need to complete courses in. You have four English credits. You have four math that includes an Algebra II or equivalent. You have three science credits that include a physical science, a life science, and an advanced science. Four social studies credits, those are a New Albany requirement for the four, which includes American history, American government, and world. There is the one credit for senior seminar. There is the half a credit for health. There's a point five credit for PE, but we don't like to keep things consistent at the department. So one PE class has point two five credits. So you still have to take two semesters of a PE in order to earn a full point five. Students can also earn their PE waiver through two seasons of a school-sponsored sport, margin band, cheerleading. There's some guidelines by the state about what we can accept for PE waivers. There are one credit of fine arts, and then three credits of electives. And one of those credits for electives needs to be a personal finance course for the class of twenty twenty-six. So our current juniors all have to take a personal finance and earn a point five credit. The second bucket is competency. So the first one, our courses you have to take, second one falls under those test scores. Really where it falls is the first thing that students have to complete or earn is what's called a competency score on ELA II, which students take at the end of their sophomore year and/or Algebra I whenever a student completes that. So we currently have seventh graders in Algebra, and so they would be taking their competency test for graduation in seventh grade. A six eighty-four above, that's the competency. If a student doesn't earn a six eighty-four, they have to take the course twice, the test twice, and if they still don't earn the competency score, then they can earn one of these other options for competency. They can show career readiness by earning an industry-recognized credential. They can do a supporting, which is Ohio means jobs and/or work-based learning. They can earn twelve credit hours in CCP, earned credit in non-remediated math or ELA and ACT or SAT college. The third bucket are seals. So they said, you got your courses, you earn your test scores through competency. Now you're going to show your proficient within one of these twelve seals. You have to earn two of them, one of which is state. And of the two seals, one has to be a state-defined seal. So you have Ohio means jobs, an industry-recognized credential, a college-ready seal. So have you earned your college readiness benchmark scores? Military enlistment, citizenship seal, which is based upon your OST scores. Your science seal, which is also based upon your OST score. Honors diploma, seal of bilinguacy, technology. And then the three locally-defined seals are the community service seal, the final performing arts seal, and the student engagement seal. So students have to earn two of those. So that's just to earn your diploma, is to earn everything in the three buckets. So you have your credits, you have your competency, and you have your seals. One of the things that we looked at on the CIP was looked at our number of honors diplomas, or the percentage of our students that earn honors diplomas. The honors diploma criteria is currently in transition. And so the class of twenty twenty-six, our current juniors, have to follow the new academic or the new honors diploma criteria. There are, I just have the academic one, the academic honors diploma here, but there's also an international bachelor laureate honors diploma, a career technical honors diploma, a STEM honors diploma, a fine arts, and a social sciences honors diploma. So students can earn multiple depending on how they meet these criteria. The first three criteria are all based upon your credits. So again, if you think of those buckets, it's how many credits have you earned? For this case, it's for math, it's for science, and it's for social studies. For STEM, you actually have to have five credits of science. So the credits on top change based upon the area of the honors diploma. Criteria four, five, and six are once considered a strength of schedule. And so students, these four, five, and six are the same for all of them. Have you earned three credits of a word language? Is your GPA at three point five out of a four point O scale? So an unweighted GPA. Have you met remediation-free scores, or sorry, not remediation-free scores, specific score on the ACT and the SAT? Students have the ability to swap one of those out. So let's say they didn't have a GPA of three point five. They could swap that out for a strength of schedule by earning twelve credits of college credit plus, earning three passing scores on AP, or completing an apprenticeship, a certain score in work keys, ASVAB, or work-based learning. And then lastly, requirement seven and eight. Seven is always your seal requirement. So depending on, in this case, they said you have to earn two additional diploma seals, not including the honors, in order to earn the academic honors. So you actually have to earn five seals for this, for the academic. And lastly, number eight is the same for all of them. Students have to complete a field experience portfolio of high means job readiness or work-based learning. So the experiential learning, this is the, the, I would say the one that has changed the most compared to the previous honors diploma. Students have to complete a field experience, a portfolio or Ohio means job seal. We are currently working, all of our students have to complete a senior seminar project. And so we've been meeting with the senior team to embed the Ohio means job seal or the field experience directly into every student's plan for their senior seminar. So every student, as they work towards one of those, those eight, because you only have to earn seven of the eight. Every student will have the ability to earn the OMJ or the field experience through their senior seminar project. And then lastly, the local report card. This is the one measure that hasn't been rated for the last two years, the college career workforce, military readiness. These are all of the things that they include in that. So this idea is, are we preparing our students for those four E's, right? Enrollment, enlistment, entrepreneurship or employment. So right, are we, are we preparing them for one of those four? So in the local report card, it says, has anyone in the senior class earned one of these potentials? Did they earn an honors diploma? Did they earn a combination of three or more advanced placement? Did they earn twelve credits in CCP? Did they complete a pre-apprenticeship? So when you look back at our CIP, we actually put a goal around pre-apprenticeships because this is one area that we feel like we can bolster and provide additional opportunities for our students, not just inside the four walls of classroom. So these are the items, when we look at this, there's a, have our seniors completed one of these? So when you look at the calculation, this is the calculation. It takes the total number of students that have earned one of those and you can't double dip. So if you earn the honors diploma and you receive twelve credits in CCP, you only count once. So has every student, how many students earned one of those criteria? Divided by the total number of students in the graduating class. So this is where we've been sitting in the seventies, we were at seventy-six percent this past school year. We want to see that increase by increasing our number of opportunities for students to earn pre-apprenticeships. You know, we do a really great job with our honors diploma, but how are we helping other students to earn some experiences? And the last thing was graduation rate. This is one where when you look at, we have all of our students, we get them to graduation and we see our graduation rate is not at a hundred percent. Well, why not? So all of our other calculations within the local report card, there are parameters on when students are counted and when they aren't. The graduation rate is one where there are no parameters. A kid comes in, whether they're there a day, two days and they leave, we have to count for them. So, I mean, I have a student right now who started this school year, left to go to Michigan. I have no idea whether or not that student enrolled or didn't enroll. But that student, because they were on campus for one day, will count in our graduation rate and will count against us because we can't track whether or not graduated. So, but this is everything that's included in there. But I wanted you guys to see that and understand because I think the graduation rate can sometimes be misleading. When we do all of this work to get our kids these experiences to get to graduation. So that's my quick presentation on graduation requirements. It's our high school assistant principals and our high school counselors and high school teachers do a really nice job of helping support kids to get to graduation. You know, with these new requirements, there's such a greater flexibility with a student and how they earn their graduation, whether it needed different types of seals, whether it be competency. We are trying to always be creative and helping support our kids to get them ultimately to that, to that end game and to receive their diploma. So with that, are there any? Okay, are there any questions or comments?
It seems like a lot for parents and students to understand all of this.
Yes.
How do we, how do we help them understand all of this?
So there's two things, well, several. There, our website has everything on there. Our counselors go in and have conversations with our, with each of the classes, especially when it comes around to scheduling time. All students can track their graduation progress in their Ohio graduation plan, whether or not they do not competency. All of that is in school links. So they can track their credits, they can track their competencies and they can track what seals they've earned. And so all of that is within the, the system for parents that have access through the, the parent codes.
And the seals are their definitions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's criteria on how to earn them for each one.
Are we able to advise students and their parents where they, you know, where they are currently in terms of satisfying these based on courses they've been able to already take? What their plan is over the remaining years. So if it's a sophomore, end of the year, junior and senior year, and whether that gets them to the finish line, so to speak.
Yes, so in school links, the Ohio graduation plan actually has all of that and there's a course planner in there. So we haven't really rolled it out in bulk, gusto, I would say. But students starting in their freshman year can plan out all four years of courses. And you can click them and change them and move and say, you want one kind of honors track. So it'll automatically populate. Once you click that, it'll show you what potentially that four-year plan is. The seals, we actually have students put in what seals they land to earn, starting in their freshman year, but that can always change. You know, at the beginning of your freshman year, you're like, yes, I might want to do the fine arts, but then you were like, I don't really want to do two full seasons of or do two shows at, in the theater. So that can always change.
Are there any waivers available for students?
Great question. The only waiver would say would be an exemption for a student on an IEP based upon their individual education plan. They still have to earn their course credits and they still have to earn seals, but there can be exemptions for the test part. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I conclude in a brief word for this evening, President Kalanowski.
All right. We have tabled discussion items, so we'll move into superintendent items. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
Mr. McClellan and Mr. Wilson, Superintendent Sawyers.
President Kalanowski, our supportive education, letter A for personnel, including the correction that we did at the beginning of the meeting incorporates the new terms and conditions of negotiated agreement, both with the Plainland Education Association and OFC Local Three Oh Three. You see changes this evening for teacher salaries based upon graduate credit coursework earned, definitely throughout the summer, that then qualifies them for change of placement. So that happens two times per year. There's an extremely long list that starts the school year. There'll be another list in the spring, late winter, early spring. From Mrs. Lofton and the Assistant Superintendent, resignations and then additional employees that have been hired. So we are still finishing hiring for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We've had some positions become vacant, gone through the posting process for hiring purposes. After we evaluate, justify the position, anything that needs to change with the position at all, just like we do in other staffing procedures and protocols. So those positions are actually on tonight's agenda for continued recommendation. Letter B under general business this evening. Call your attention to the affiliation agreement. So I don't talk about these often, but we actually had a question from someone about this. When we have an affiliation agreement that appears on the agenda tonight's is for Grand Canyon University for the purpose of placing student teachers in field experience. So we have articulation agreements that we do with colleges and universities to give field experience for future teachers into the school district in classrooms to earn their hours that are required towards licensure. So someone recently said, why do you guys have affiliation agreements? What does that mean? It's just a university that Mrs. Lofton's working with specifically to allow for placement. You have a student in our geographic area that wants to come here for field placement or for student teaching. And there's a formalized process to do the affiliation agreement with the university. So that's on here this evening. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
When we do an affiliation agreement, is that for the year or is that a ongoing, once they're on the list, they're on the list?
Mr. McClellan, it depends on the university. Many of them renew it each year and some of them do it for a two or three year period. Some of our local universities, we tend to do for a little, little bit longer time.
And how many, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense, you have a lot of Ohio schools. How many non-Ohio schools do we typically do this with?
Four or five on the list, just due to the influx of all the online preparation programs that are available now.
With none, Ms. Lofton, please call the roll.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller? President Kalanowski?
Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to adjournment for this evening. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Aloud.
Second.
Mr. Wilson and Mr. McClellan, Ms. Lofton, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yeah.
President Kalanowski?
Yes, and the motion carries. Our next meeting is on October twenty-